All right, good evening, everybody. We're gonna get our meeting started here. Number of guests, please make sure you sign in. There's a registration on the table back there. So with that, roll call, please.
Trustee, Brinek.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Whitworth.
Here.
Ellen Beck.
Here.
Kumbir.
Here.
Phelps.
Here.
McNamara.
Here. If we could stand, before we have the pledge of allegiance, a month ago, we lost one of our village employees. Chrissy Brenwood, who was the deputy clerk and deputy administrator, died in a tragic car accident. We could just have a moment of silence and remembrance for her, please. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Lisa, has this meeting been properly posted? And if so, where?
It has been posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, the Cambridge Post Office, the Badger Bay Bank First, and the Village website.
Okay. Sounds like we're up and legal. All righty, we have public comment. We have one person who is invited. Safe Communities, or Cheryl Whitkey. Cheryl, you can come up, introduce yourself, and share with us your comments.
Good evening, and thanks so much for the opportunity to talk to you today. Mostly, I'm here to thank you for the support and partnership that Safe Communities and the Village of Cambridge have embarked on together. My name is Cheryl Whitkey. I'm director of Safe Communities. We're an injury prevention coalition. We've been around for about 23 years. And we're basically a coalition of about 350 partners. And I'm delighted that Cambridge is among our partners. I was really delighted to have conversations with the EMS service and with the sheriff's deputy who works here. We work with you already on a couple of projects that I just wanted to touch base with you about and also offer more opportunities to work together if we can. So as I mentioned, we coordinate collaborative campaigns with organizations and individuals that have a significant interest in investment in safety. We have a small staff. We're not about building a staff empire. We're really about convening a lot of partners to get the work done. Because the idea is that we really can't just have one agency or one organization working on safety. It's just too big of an issue. We have to have first responders, healthcare, churches, schools, municipalities, everybody pulling in the same direction. So what we do is we look at the top causes of injury in Dane County, and then we build partnerships to address those. So just to give you a sense of some of the work that we have done together, we have a task force called Ending Deaths From Despair. We know that there's been an increase in deaths from overdose and also from suicide and chronic alcoholism. It's the first time in generations where we've seen the life expectancy of Americans go down. And it's really driven by these issues. So again, that takes a lot of people working together to address that problem. So we've convened this task force. We have an Ending Deaths From Despair webinar series that does things like educate people about how to identify that somebody that they know might be at risk of suicide. It connects healthcare agencies with gun shops so that people can be informed that there are safe places to store guns if they're in a suicidal crisis. So we're actually partner with Mountain Men Guns here in Cambridge to be a safe storage site for people who want to store their guns if they're experiencing a crisis. We promote the Step On program, which is an evidence-based falls prevention program that's been shown to reduce falls by 35% among people who take it. And I was really delighted to talk with Community Paramedic and others about how we can, again, sort of flag the people who are frequent fallers in Cambridge and get them more connected with services. So that's something that we're really excited about. We are the first in the country to make that connection between healthcare systems and gun shops. I think it's, you know, we have to meet people where they are and get them the resources that they're gonna use and are valuable to them. So just sort of by the numbers, we also administer or coordinate generally county-wide Med Drop program. And we're delighted that you have a Med Drop location here in Cambridge. And thank you to the sheriff's office for managing that. Over the last 20 years, we've collected over 18 tons of unused and unwanted medications throughout Dane County. We know that 75% of people who use opioids, for example, for the first time, get them from people that they know with or without asking. So the biggest drug pusher in our community is actually our local, our medicine chest. So we have to get those medicines out of there if they're not being used. We also have a recovery coaching program where people who have lived experience, so they woke up in the emergency room after an overdose, they're in recovery, and now they're going into the emergency rooms and meeting with people who are treated for overdose to get them connected to recovery services. So we also have that at the jail. We know that it's, there's a lot of people who leave jail after having an addiction. Or having an addiction, they leave jail, they get out, and they start using again. So how can we change that cycle? So through the recovery coaching program, we have, again, people who've been in that experience are now in recovery, working with people who need that kind of help. We have available medication lock boxes. That's something we're really delighted to share. And when we have take-back events for Med Drop, we share those with the sheriff's office and other partners so that folks can lock up medications that they need. And then we have a suicide prevention partnership. It's called Zero Suicide. We work with all of the healthcare systems and with a lot of community partners to do community education on how to recognize signs and symptoms that somebody may be suicidal. We work, again, on this concept of means reduction. We know that if people have access to lethal means, for example, if they are in a suicidal crisis and they have a gun, or they have a plan for using medications to, you know, complete suicide, we have to separate them from those means. And it's actually interesting how we train people to ask those hard questions. So we have trainings that we, again, be delighted to offer here in partnership with you in the village. We also coordinate, in partnership with Dane County, the Dane County Traffic Safety Commission. And I'm so sorry for your loss. I did not realize that you lost a valued staff member to a traffic crash. I'm sure you're all heartbroken about that. And again, those are deaths that are preventable. We have a traffic safety commission that's over 50 organizations working together to address what really underlies a lot of the fatal traffic crashes. So speed, alcohol, failure to wear seatbelts. You know, again, if we can get in front of young people, in particular, who are, and people who have, you know, addiction and are, you know, driving while, you know, drinking when driving, those are the kind of efforts that we're engaged in at Safe Communities in a coordinated fashion. And I also mentioned the Falls Prevention Partnership. So we have a countywide Falls Prevention Task Force that works together to get evidence-based programs out there. So in terms of what's next in 2023, the Traffic Safety Commission has formed a number of work groups based on what the data tells us about what is driving these fatalities in Dane County. Risky driving behavior, impaired driving, pedestrian crashes. And then we also see a higher rate of traffic injuries and deaths among people of color. So we have a specific initiative focused on that. Preventing drug harm, as I mentioned, we run the recovery coaching program in the emergency departments at all the hospitals in Dane County. And then also through jail, through drug court, all the diversion programs. We have our recovery coaching programs there. We're also working with public health to widely disseminate Narcan throughout the county. Where we purchased, through a grant from the opioid settlement funds, we've purchased 100 Oak boxes, which are overdose prevention kits that basically have Narcan and fentanyl test strips in them. We're gonna be putting those up all over the county. And then just educate people about the prevalence of fentanyl in counterfeit pills. You know, we're losing a lot of people to fentanyl poisoning. And it's in pills that look like prescription pills. So you wouldn't necessarily know that it's got all this fentanyl in it. So, you know, we really have to educate people about the prevalence of that. So I'll just, I think I've sort of covered probably more than than you need to know even. But, you know, we are, we're working together. I just want to sort of emphasize that we're a partnership. We're collaborative. We really are open to more opportunities to work together and bring new partners on board. So I want to thank you for your time. Thanks for your support. And I'm open to questions if you have any.
I have one question here for you, Cheryl. I'm astounded at this, whatever it was, 18 tons?
Yeah.
Of drugs. What do you do with that? Do you burn those? Or you just can't put those in the Dane County landfill?
No, actually, the DEA, the Drug, DEA, what's DEA? Drug Enforcement Administration? They host, along with DOJ, they host a collection event twice a year in all the Med Drop locations. And we have 14 in Dane County. All of those locations, in addition to communities that host the take-back events, you know, just as part of the take-back days. They bring them to the State Patrol headquarters. So there's tons and tons of medication that go to DeForest twice a year. They bundle them up, and they put them in a truck, and they take them to an incinerator in Indiana. And they're safely incinerated there. And there's a whole chain of custody. So it leaves a Med Drop box. The law enforcement at the Med Drop box signs off, gives it to DOJ for custody, and then it's incinerated.
Yeah, okay. Seems like an awful lot, 18 tons.
Right.
That's 36,000 pounds of that stuff. Okay. Any other questions?
On your website, do you have any, like, flyers or things that we could print out? Because I'm thinking about, like, the Ending Despair webinar series. If we had a flyer on that, that we could post at the library or other areas, things like that might be very helpful for the community.
Yes. We have all that. And I brought some things that I can leave with you, too.
And if you don't want to give those to me, we can get some upstairs. We can share some at the library.
Sounds great.
That'd be great. All right?
My pleasure.
Thank you so much.
Cheryl, thank you very much for coming by and giving us an update here.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks.
We're pleased to support you in this endeavor. All righty, are there any other individuals that would like to speak at this time? Anybody else? Come on up, sir.
Thank you.
If you can identify yourself.
Yes, my name is Dean Lund, resident here in Cambridge. I would like to discuss, please, the Highway 134 interchange with QuickTrip. We haven't talked about it, nor have I, I haven't seen it for a while. But I heard rumor that they're going out for bid on that project. And I know you can't answer any questions. But if it's approved, do we have the final specs? If it's approved, do we have sidewalk? Do we have a crosswalk? If it's approved, do we have a bike path? If it is approved, was there a CAD study done on the traffic patterns? I know the developer will be paying for the intersection at 134. But if we, as a village, have to pay for, say, stoplights at 18, who will be responsible for that payment? So if it's approved, and it is available, I guess I'd like to see the final plat. So that's where I'm at with that, if possible. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, fair warning. All right, we're gonna close this portion of the meeting here to public comment. We'll move on. Approval of the consent agenda. That's, you know, not ready yet, Lisa?
Nope.
So nothing to approve, right?
Yeah.
So we'll just move right on from there. Okay, various reports. I'll start off here. Couple of things. Number one, I want to thank, I want to thank three merchants in town. And it has to deal with the senior meals program. And you might be talking about this later.
I've got something on that, too.
But Piggly Wiggly, BP, and the QuickTrip really stepped forward to help out with our meals. There was a snafu with the provider, and they volunteered, and they were helping out. So I want to turn my hat to them. We'll learn more. There is, there was a nice donation. I can't tell you who made this, but it was an area resident, $15,000 that went towards equipment for the EMS. And it was a Lucas defibrillator, I believe. So that came through. The, I want to thank the primary workers, the employees. You saw in check run, a lot of dispersments. I think there's like 16 of you. You know, thank you very much for being there.
The poll workers?
The poll workers. I think it quoted as primary workers.
Yeah.
For the checks. But I wanted to thank you. I know Paula, you were there. Dean was there. Lisa was there. And everybody worked well. I don't, there were no snafus that I was aware of. Nobody has told me about anything.
Really great turnout from Cambridge, like usual.
Yeah.
We're a good voting community.
And then I'm going to, there's two events. Paula, you went to one. It was this last Saturday. Can you just tell us about it real quickly?
I went tonight at the disco for the Arts Council Gala, which is their, probably their biggest fundraiser for the year. The fundraiser is really focused on the concerts in the park and making sure we raise money to be able to support that. I know a lot of people do participate and enjoy those concerts in the park. It was a lovely evening, and there was much glitter and much disco dancing. So it was lovely. Great thanks to Lori Strass. She is just pivotal in getting all that stuff done.
A lot of people come in for that.
Yep.
Not able to make it. I asked you, and you were there, so that's great. I also know that Cambridge is gonna have their Chocolate Walk on the 27th of April, 5 to 8 downtown. And the tickets are 15, but they made it sound like they'll probably be selling out. So if you're gonna get anything, you better get your ticket now for the Chocolate Walk. This is right up your alley there, Chuck. So I would expect you to be... Yeah, yeah, okay. So that is the president's report for this week. Let's move on. Library Board.
I didn't attend the Library Board on February 8th, but I, we've had meetings since then. We've interviewed two more candidates for Joan's position, and we have not made a decision on making an offer to these last two candidates.
Okay.
The first candidate we made an offer to turned down. We're still working on it.
All right. Okay, that's good. Personnel Committee, met just here recently.
Yep, the only, everything that we talked about in the Personnel Committee shows up later in the agenda.
All right, okay. Can we ask Mr. Todd Lord to step up to the table and give us a kind of an update here on our public works?
Long time. Todd Lord, Public Works. Thank you for your support, you guys coming in and checking in on us. We really appreciate that, and it showed. Cody finished his schooling. I actually stepped in on that because I'm gonna be taking a test, too. So I wanted to step in and get the info that I needed to get a test that I have to take. And they let me in for free because I've already had the class. So I get to do it for free. And I did it. We're trying to get ready for spring, and winter keeps coming. We've had deja Thursday, what, three days? Three Thursdays in a row now. So it sounds like Friday's gonna be, it's gonna throw us off a little bit. We're trying to get things back together again. We're still in a little bit of shock and awe. Lisa's been helping and supporting us the best that she can because she's, she can't be here all the time because she's obviously hurting. So otherwise, we've been busy. And working on equipment, still waiting for a Public Works meeting, too.
How's the street sweeper doing?
Still waiting for that. I guess they got some parts on it, and they're trying to put it together.
Good.
So I'm hoping in spring it comes, so we get nice, clean curbs.
Sure.
So it doesn't have to drive me crazy.
I agree.
Two items, Todd. You and I talked earlier, sidewalks, you know, watching those. And I know you were gone last Friday. We had the snowfall. We had some storefronts that had the snow on the front. So that was taken care of. Phone calls were made, I guess?
Oh, yeah, I made phone calls. I, you know, usually you drop off a, you drop off a thing, and then you give them 24 hours. But I think phone calls seem to be more aggressive than... I mean, I wasn't being aggressive with them, but I was just stating that, you know, this is Main Street. You know? And it should be taken care of. The only person I couldn't get ahold of is that, the old place where they were doing dresses and stuff like that, that dress shop right there. And they, the last three snowfalls, I can't get ahold of anybody. I've got a phone number, and I've never got an answer back from them.
And we can mail the notice to them. So let me know if you can't...
Because I'm thinking, obviously, we're just gonna start doing it for now and just assuming that they're not...
We have to give them the notice.
Right.
So let me know, and we can mail it.
After that last ice storm, there was this much ice sitting on that.
Yeah.
Okay. And then last week, I had noticed that, well, somebody had told me, because I hadn't come in, but the flags were still flying full mast. And they had to come down half-mast for Governor Tony Earl. And that was taken care of.
Yep.
Okay. So thank you very much for that.
Yep.
All right, any other questions for Todd?
Do you have, if you have agenda items, you might want to let them know?
Well, pretty much it's equipment.
Okay.
That is the biggest agenda item. I know, I know, things are tight, but, you know, the equipment's only gonna last so much longer. You know, and we got to, it's, if you're gonna get a new vehicle or something, you're looking at a two-year setback.
We just need to make a plan around it, yeah.
Right.
Thank you for everything you're doing, Todd. Express our thanks to the staff as well.
Thank you. I'll let them know.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna go on to village office updates. And before you start, Lisa, I do want to thank you. I know that you have a medical convalescence. And I know you have restricted hours, and you're doing everything you can to keep things moving here. And we do appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right?
Yes, thank you, Lisa.
Can you give us an update from where you're at on various matters?
Yep, and thank you, Mark. And I know I shared with board, but I, it is another four weeks of part-time hours, starting fiscal therapy. So I'm trying to be here 10 until 2 most days unless we have meetings. Today, I came in this afternoon for a couple hours left, came back for tonight. So flexing it around what's needed that day, but trying to be here 10 till 2. So want to give a huge thank you to Judy and Vicky. Unfortunately, Vicky's been out sick. So Judy has really stepped up, working more hours. You know, she's scheduled 20 hours a week. But she's working a lot more, picking up where we need. They've both been very helpful. We have gotten all tax settlements, done all the tax work. So stepping in, helping where they can on all of those to make it easier when I get here to do what I have to do. Tax settlements are done. The election, like, we settled in very smoothly. We probably had about between 40 and 45% turnout in Cambridge, which for this election is a huge turnout. So like Mark said, thank you to everybody who did work. And we do still have to finish up on the post-election paperwork and putting in the state system and so forth. But we're done with the election. We got everything to the counties. Thank you. Dean took stuff to Jefferson County for me that next morning. Again, we had bad weather. I had to be in Madison for my post-op appointment. So he volunteered to take the stuff to Jefferson for me so I could just go to Dane County. As much as we hate to say it, we're starting on the April election already, having to start on notices, ring ballots, and those types of things. So gearing up for that. Been working on closing out paperwork for Chrissy with benefits, insurance, working with her husband's employer, taking care of that, working with the family with things they need. We got some end-of-year stuff done on our retirement reconciliation, annual reconciliations. We do today was the paperwork for the WET grant that we received for the new laptop. Got that all submitted to the state. We did have a pre-construction meeting this morning on the, or this afternoon, on the WELL project. As you know, bids had gone out, had been approved. So we met with, with the county, with the state, with the contractors, the subcontractors, our engineers. We're looking mid-April is when we'll start to see work being done out there. They'll be starting with putting in the backwash tanks and extending the water mains needed to the building. And then they will start construction of the building after that. So by summer, it should be in full. So that's moving along. We'll be sending out a notice to the neighbors and so forth, letting them know we'll be starting on that. Reaching out to Town of Oakland. A couple permits will be needed from Oakland. As they'll need a right-of-way permit to be putting some stuff in as the roads are theirs. It would be their right-of-way permit and so forth. So I'll be reaching out to them as well. But thank you, board, for being patient. Thank you.
Questions of the Board of Trustees here for Lisa? Lisa, I have one. I'll give you a moment to...
That's okay. It's been a long month, yeah.
All right. Yep. Actually, I'll kind of direct this one over to Eric. Eric, how's the audit? Have you anything? Have we started?
I've been in touch with the auditors. They're getting together, letting me know what Chrissy had submitted to them, what they're gonna need from us. So they've been great, reaching out, you know. So I'll be working with them to see where we are, what they need, and go forward.
All right. And then maybe the next meeting, we might have some of the minutes for the meetings, if you've got that, kind of. All right. I understand.
Tax collection and the election were the first two priorities. So now that we're kind of past that, there's still some election work. But now we'll be able to start delving into some of that other stuff.
Okay. Anything else for Lisa? All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on. Treasuries report and bills. Lisa, what can you tell us about this? Two runs.
Total amount Judy had sent out this afternoon, the second run. So sorry if you guys, that came out later today. But the first run was $17,272.16. Second run is $32,021.23, for a total of $49,293.39.
I make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $49,293.39.
One second.
All right, discussion? There was just one, and it had to deal with a payment on a piece of equipment, the final payment.
The $5,000...
Yeah.
So that audit finance had approved... So that audit finance had approved. We were at the end of the lease for one of our lawn mowers, and we could purchase it. It was just over $5,000. And Todd can let us know. It's about a $20,000 piece of equipment, so with the hours we had on it, it was...
It was a good deal to go ahead.
A good deal to purchase out the lease.
Okay, all right, that's what, was the only thing I noticed that I wanted to ask about. Any others? Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Franklin.
Yes.
Whitworth.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Kumbir.
Yes.
Phelps.
Yep.
Ryan Egg.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. All right, thank you. Okay, moving on.
I'd like to make a motion to move the 9A and B and any other business that involves ALERS up to current discussion, so that we can get ALERS out of here.
Sure.
One second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Anybody opposed?
So ALERS is just 9A and B, right?
Yeah, it should be 9.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so...
Yeah, mine's spread out here.
You can identify yourselves, sir.
Hello, everyone. Ryan Raymer with ALERS. I'm here to speak to the financing of WELL 3. Lisa just kind of walked through construction, starting to move in April. So if you recall, our last meeting, we were here discussing the interim financing for that and the long-term financing options for that. And what was decided was to use the Safe Drinking Water Fund Loan Program, which won't be immediately available based on that state funding cycle. But with that, there was a need for the interim financing, so that is what we're kind of speaking to tonight. So I did notice that in your packet, you had the presentation that we had provided for tonight, so I'm just going to kind of walk through that, so that you're understanding of everything that's going on with the interim financing. So the first slide just kind of reiterates why we're here. Ultimately, we were drafting terms since the last meeting with the help of Village Bond Council in order to get, you know, this solicitation out for the interim financing. And then, looking for, the village should kind of provide a list of underwriters in order to distribute the terms. So ultimately, at the end of this, I would say beyond the initial resolution, which I'll speak to later, what I'm looking for is direction as to who to send this to, and I'll kind of speak to where we got to in, in that list. And, you know, would either appreciate a discussion or certainly a motion as to who to send this to. And then finally, like, the, the designee to who we can put on the cover letter, and I'll make a recommendation to both of those items through this presentation. So with that, we're going to kind of review the term sheet. I'll mention highlights on that. We're looking at deciding that distribution list, and then finally, the initial resolution. So the first item is that term sheet, and this is Appendix A of the packet. And ultimately, looking at the proposal letter, you know, typically we designate a signee, and then we would place that on the village's letterhead. You know, I would say Lisa's the best candidate for that, in that she would be the one in the office who could directly work with myself to, you know, answer questions that the potential underwriters would have. This is kind of typical, to have that lead staff person on there. So that would be kind of my recommendation for that proposal letter, and only to just identify, you know, who these banks would be potentially speaking to in terms of the village representative. In terms of the term sheet, some of the items of note there is that, these are anticipation notes. So we say it can be done GO or revenue, just know it's neither of those things. It's, it's technically an obligation that says your pledge is the future issuance. So this repayment of debt will be a future issuance of debt, meaning that you'll refund this at the end, in terms of when your Safe Drinking Water Fund Loan becomes available. You would be refinancing this interim amount, whatever you've drawn to date, and that Safe Drinking Water Fund Loan is available. You'd be then reimbursing, paying off that debt, and paying off any future costs that you may have with that Safe Drinking Water Fund Loan once it's available. We are looking at kind of that unique structure. One of the primary reasons, just having interest due and maturity, so that the interest payment would be program-eligible. These state programs work where your interest, if you were to make interest payments in the interim, that actually wouldn't be reimbursable, so we just want to provide that financial flexibility should you choose to do so, have that interest all due at the end. And then, another key component was the ability to draw on this, meaning that if, you know, we don't know exactly when the Safe Drinking Water Fund Loan will be available. It should be early 2024, late 2023. But that said, sometimes those program mechanics can be difficult to navigate, in which, you know, the engineer and myself will be helping the village navigate that to try to close on it as quickly as possible. But that said, the ability to draw and kind of repay this at any time, and as well as making it a private placement. All I mean by that is that this is a security that's traded on a securities market, and that just basically means lower costs of financing to the village, wherein there's less disclosure requirements and items such as that. So those are kind of the unique structure components of the term sheet. And then the final form that you'll kind of note in our term sheet in Appendix A is a proposal form. This is essentially what the underwriter would fill out, provide to the village, and then we'll walk through at the later date with, you know, so we'll be back at a, a future board meeting to go through what those proposal forms all entail from each underwriter. The next component is the distribution list, and this is Appendix B. So this is essentially choosing the banks of who we're going to send this to. As I mentioned in the previous presentation, that we represent the village as your municipal advisor. We're not a broker-dealer or placement agent. Basically, we're on your end of the table, so we're not saying you should work with this bank, because either I like the person or et cetera. It's basically to say that the village should be the one choosing who this is sent to. So in discussing with village staff, you know, we mentioned, provide any banks that you have relationships with, and then if you're open to it, we can send you a list of banks who have bid on similar underwritings. And, and the reason for that is just to know that you're getting bids. You know, as I mentioned, this is a unique financing structure, and so the banks in which you have a relationship with may not be attuned to what you're requesting. And so, you know, village staff did indicate that they would like a list of underwriters who have bid on similar offerings. And what I mean by similar offerings is, again, kind of that private placement, and then also the anticipation note component of this. For the last five years, I provided that list on the bottom right of this slide, and as well as some more detail on the specific communities they bid in and dollar amounts. Ultimately, you know, we're trying to kind of hone in on something as similar as possible, but it is the village's board determination to, you know, decide on this list. That said, my recommendation would be to send it, you know, to these, to this list. I don't think it's too exhaustive of a list. If it's, I think it's about eight or nine here, plus the two, so probably 11 in total. But just send it to all of these individual underwriters in order to kind of widen the market, similar to a public bid for a construction project, but more or less, you know, sending it to those underwriters who would be accustomed to the type of financing in which you're doing. You can certainly ask to open it up beyond that. You know, it can go greater than five years. Generally, though, you know, we, we may have lost touch with whatever contact, you know, may have been with those banks as well. So that said, our recommendation for the term sheet would be to have Lisa as the designee. And then, secondarily, the recommendation for the distribution list would be to send it to Badger Bank, Bank First, and then the other underwriters that were discovered in the staff's desire to get that list. So all of those mentioned in this list And then, the initial resolution is the resolution basically setting the stage, saying that this sale will happen, and then identifying the pledge, that pledge being an anticipation note. It's not a general obligation, will not eat into your general obligation debt capacity. You're pledging a future issuance to basically say, we're going to refund this at a future time with a long-term program. Right now, that's identified as the Safe Drinking Water Fund Loan per our previous meeting. So there's, you know, nothing too unique outside of those general components. This was drafted by your village's bond council, kind of per our recommendation as well. Moving forward, just wanted to provide a, kind of a timeline. You know, tonight, we're looking at the interim sale process and that distribution list. Ultimately, we'd be look, looking to then send it tomorrow to that distribution list, and then request bids or responses by March 22nd. And then, the village board considering that award March 28th. So when I said I would be back, March 28th would be the meeting, that I would be back, in order to review the bids and then award the bid presumably to the lowest cost of financing there. And then beyond that, NSA and the financing team as a whole would continue to work on the Safe Drinking Water Fund Loan Program closure. Beyond that is, is those appendices that I kind of spoke to, again, prior to the item B here. I kind of would recommend either a motion acknowledging Lisa as the designee is, is my recommendation there, and then the list being encompassing of, of those underwriters that I've placed in this presentation, unless you'd like to discuss it, and, you know, provide the list to whomever you, you choose.
I'll make a motion to designate, to list Lisa Moen, village administrator, as our designee on the documents, and to send the bid requests to the full distribution list provided by ALERS, in addition to the two local banks we have in town.
One second.
Okay.
Do you think it makes a difference in the distribution list? I mean, because some of those, it looks like it was the local bank, and like, we're looking for $5 million, and a lot of those were only $1 million, but it doesn't...
Yeah.
I mean, if they aren't interested, they just won't reply.
Correct, yeah. Great question. We, we've found some, you know, in, in recent history, some surprises in terms of who bid and who won't bid. So that's kind of where the par amount, I would say generally, you know, if they bid over a million, they can most likely handle 5 million, but you're correct, that they would just not respond if they couldn't handle that amount, so.
So you can make sure we get this out to Badger and Hometown?
Yep.
Okay.
Bank, Bank First, what's the new name?
I, I...
Yeah.
I, I should know.
AK.
Yes, I apologize. Bank of Cambridge. Okay, so we've got a motion in a second. Any questions on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we've got that taken care of here for you, Brian.
And then the initial resolution, too, you should act on, which is B. But I've kind of spoken to that. If you have questions, I can answer them now.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023-04, the resolution providing for the sale of a $5,320,000 note, anticipation note, Series 2023A.
One second.
Okay. We're, we're going that. Yeah, any questions? Is this a roll call item on this one? Just a...
We, yes, let's do a roll call, because the sheet we have to fill out for Paulson Brady.
All right, roll call.
Who does need the votes. Whitworth.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Kumbir.
Yes.
Phelps.
Yes.
Ryan Egg.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. All right, thank you. Ryan, appreciate you coming by here.
Thank you for sending the information in the packet beforehand. And Lisa, thank you for telling us to make sure we read it, so I appreciated that. And thank you for really preparing us so that we could make a, you know, informed decision on this. I appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
All right.
Drive safely.
Okay. We'll look forward to seeing you there when this thing is, you're digging down with your shovels.
Exactly.
I'll bring my shovel.
Yeah.
[laughing]
All right, okay. Let's move back up now to new business. Item A, update on the senior meals.
Okay. I did receive some information from Lori today. I'll just skim over it really quickly for you. As many of you know, Cambridge Meal Site, Senior Meal Site is part of the Dane County full senior programming. We received a few hours' notice that the caterer was abruptly ending the contract that they had only just started a couple weeks before, so they started beginning of January, backed out of the contract. McFarland Senior Outreach Services Director, who oversees the contract on our behalf, as well as McFarland's, began immediately developing a plan for the 90 seniors, with approximately 20 of them here at the Cambridge site. At that time, it was unknown what period of time was needed to plan for in the leg and services. McFarland Senior Outreach in Dane County purchased shelf-stable food for all Cambridge participants to cover a two-week period of time while we were, they were figuring out what would be happening. Once the food was secured, we did continue the two-week drive-up. We didn't have in-house eating, but drive-up services, partially so that they could continue to keep a check on the elderly citizens who use our, our services. Since meals usually come hot and ready, we needed to address who among our participants might need additional help with the shelf-stable foods, such as the ability to open packages, whether they could heat them up and so forth. So they addressed those concerns individually and had plans in place. The seniors dining were treated to pizza, fruit, salads, desserts provided by local Cambridge businesses. Our seniors and staff felt the love. Again, they wanted to recognize the Cambridge heroes that assisted us, Quick Trip, Leslie and Todd Root, the BP, Julie, Piggly Wiggly, Nate and Clark. Also wanted to praise McFarland Senior Outreach staff, especially Dawn Fleury, the Cambridge Nutrition Site Coordinator, who rose to the occasion to serve the citizens with ongoing care and concerns. Thank you to Cambridge volunteers Edna Kufel and Audrey Lentz, who helped make the twice-weekly service go smoothly. As of now, the catering has returned to the previous provider from last year's contract, Consolidated Foods, until such time another caterer is procured. We do have the menus through March, so they're working with us, continuing that. I want to thank the community for sharing your love and concern for the seniors of Cambridge community during this time. With sincere appreciation, Lori Anderson, Director of McFarland Senior Outreach.
That's very nice.
So we're back to on-site.
All right.
Until we know who else. What's next?
Again, thank you to those who step forward. And if you could pass it on, Sheila, Mike Day over there at Pig, and, and Quick Trip, and the BP Amoco. They, they really did help out, so we, we were able to keep that going. All right. Okay, item B, 8B, proclamation for Joan Beam in retirement. Joan, I'll handle this one here, because Joan, as you know, is our, our librarian, and she has been for 35 years. And she had kind of a birthday party retirement. She is... is going to be stepping down.
And I do have something to read from Joan to work on.
Oh, okay. I was, you've seen this, but I'll just read this very last part here. She's not here tonight. She would not want to listen to this, but Joan, if you're out there in TV land, here you go. Now therefore, I, Mark McNally, Village President, on behalf of the Village of Cambridge Board of Trustees, thank Joan Beam for her ongoing dedication to the Cambridge Community Library and its customers. We wish her well in retirement, giving her more time to enjoy her family and sit back and enjoy a few books. This was presented to her on the 16th of February. Ideally, we would have, we would have been able to meet and sign, but we couldn't. And so I just took the prerogative of, you know, doing this and giving it to her at that time. What else can you share here, Lisa?
Joan did give me, and I did give you a copy, but she asked if I could read this tonight. Cambridge Village Board and community members, thank you for the opportunity to have served the Cambridge community. I have so enjoyed my time serving the many community members that have passed through the library doors. I will miss countless aspects of my work. For the most part, my days were filled with friendships and laughter while providing the many services and fulfilling the workload of an ever-expanding library. This is what everyone should be able to experience at any workplace and then get to step away with a lifetime of results. I have worked with and for many people over my 35 years serving this community. It has been a wide-ranging experience. Countless times I have heard from many that Cambridge is so lucky to have such a wonderful library. I wholeheartedly agree, and I was lucky to have been just one of the players in making that be true. Please, even in this technology-driven world of today, don't let anyone try to tell you or do not think that physical libraries are not needed. For most people, they are so much more than just a place to get a book. We have many citizens, community, community members that rely on a physical library for many reasons. Thank you, Mark, for being present and reading. Thank you, Lisa, for the cleverly crafted proclamation that you wrote for the event on March 16th. My staff and the friends of the library board gave me a very memorable celebration. My staff, library board members and the friends shared in giving me a perfect gift to reflect my time at the library. May the new director be greeted with open arms and friendly library visits from community members. Best regards to my fellow community members, Joan Beam. She did add, my last day of as an employee is undetermined at this time. The library board is in the procedural process of firing. The library board, the new director and I will work out those exact details in the weeks to come. After the orientation process of the new director, I plan to take my five weeks of vacation before I conclude my time as an employee. Lisa, as the administrator, and I have discussed this tentative schedule.
All right.
No date set in stone, but it's coming closer forward.
All right. Ted, do you have anything to add? Library?
That'll be another tough one for you, Lisa, because you and Joan have worked together for a lot of years.
Yes, I have been here almost 19 years. So, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. And if you can pass on our regards to Joan. Okay, moving on. Item 8C, posting of the treasurer, deputy clerk administrator position. Is this Lisa or is this Paula?
So we talked about last night at the personnel committee, we found a treasury personnel position. We've asked, we went through the posting and the job description, couple of minor changes to it, but I think Lisa was going to go ahead and get those posted to a number of different administrator clerk types, treasurer sites. We're going to post it in the paper twice and.
League of municipalities.
Yeah, League of municipalities. Then and then once, once Lisa has it posted somewhere, I'm going to post it to my LinkedIn profile, just to maybe, you know, throw it out somewhere else where it might be. I think what's really important is that we do emphasize that whoever, that that someone having that municipal experience is what's going to be really important because municipal treasury and accounting is different than private accounting. So that's one of the things we're going to try and emphasize. All right. We didn't need a motion on that.
Nope.
Nope. Okay.
I'll get that posted this week.
All right. Okay, moving to item D, possible temporary assistance.
So the the Personnel Committee is making a recommendation to this board to have Lisa reach out to some area recently retired or recently available munis, former municipal employees to see if they would be willing to step in in the interim to assist with stuff until we get treasurer hired.
Okay. So.
So I will make a motion to, I will make a motion to ask, to, I will make a motion to approve having Lisa reach out to local persons who have, who have recently been working in a municipal area to see if they might be interested in in a temporary employment position with the village.
I'll say it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. You know what you have to do, Lisa. Okay. All right. Thank you, Paula. Okay, we're going to move into unfinished business and we can skip by A and B since we've covered that. C, release of the existing easement of the public bike path.
I can take this one because I proposed the documents here. You'll recall that late last summer, Danson gave us permission to pave where the bike path eas, the new location of the bike path easement as opposed to the one that had originally been recorded incorrectly on the CSM. So under chapter 236 of the Wisconsin statutes, there's a mechanism for us as a municipality to use where we want to correct an easement, where where the easement is for something of a public purpose. And so this rose up onto the top of my to-do list because Brian Berquist from Town and Country needed, needed this document, needed some corrected easement in order to apply for the grant. So I worked with him and Lisa over the last couple of weeks to just get what, the way this works, it's an affidavit of correction is what it's called in the statutes. And so the formal action that we're asking by these documents is for you as the village to release the old easement that had been placed on the CSM and to approve the new one. There are two, two, two separate pieces there. But the affidavit of correction, that's Brian Berquist, you know, attesting to, to the new appropriate location to be recorded.
Okay. So do we, what do we need to do here?
We need, so the, the way, the mechanism by which you would release it and approve the new one is in the resolution that we've got in your packet. So, so we're asking for, for you to approve that resolution.
I can make a motion to approve Village Resolution Number 2023-5, recording of a correction instrument and partial release of a public bike, bike path.
I'll say it. All right. Any further discussion?
No, I'm really glad to be seeing this cleaned up.
Yes.
So this is fantastic.
Yeah. Sounds good. All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Thank you. Got that taken care of.
Was there a second portion?
Moving on. Item E, unfinished business, TID 6, assignment of MRO benefits.
I can take this one too because what, you'll recall that we have approved our developer's agreement some time ago and we're just waiting on Westgate Partners' input and final resolution of their developer agreement. In the meantime, an attorney for one of their partners, to whom they intend to sell one of the parcels, whose identity is still unknown, reached out and asked for approval of an assignment for the Westgate Partner, the MRO, the municipal revenue obligation that we will eventually pay as a village to Westgate Partners. Westgate Partners would like to enter into an assignment agreement with, with that separate third-party entity. This wouldn't normally, I mean, it's not something that the village would probably care about one way or another. It's a, it's, it's something that Westgate Partners is doing with their money after we've paid it, percentage of whatever we end up paying to Westgate Partners. But it does say in our developer agreement that no assignment shall happen without village approval. So we're asking now for, for village approval so that Westgate can, can enter into this separate agreement.
Okay. And then isn't it also saying that we will then pay that person directly?
I don't believe so. The, the agreement, unless you, you see language otherwise, but the agreement that, the duties, parties to the agreement here are Westgate and that separate person. There's no separate duty for the village here in, because the village isn't a party to any of the agreements.
Oh, perfect then.
Okay. All right. So tonight, then, you want us to?
Approve, a motion to approve the assignment agreement.
Anybody care to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve TID 6, assignment of MRO benefits.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? Is it necessary?
Yeah. Further discussion. Says here, such payments shall be made by the village directly to the assignee at the same time and in the same manner as the payments of the TIF benefit.
Oh, thank you. Yes.
Thank you. That's, that's what I was talking about. I think we're just set on here.
Yes. So, I mean, instead of paying to Westgate Partners, we would just pay this separate person. But it's no different. We wouldn't ever pay more than we were originally going to pay.
Got it. It's just instead, when, when we're ready to cut a check for whatever the check is, 40% would go to the unnamed person and 60% would go to Westgate.
Exactly. Exactly.
Will we have a name by then?
Yeah.
I'll take that 40%.
Right. Right. But, right, that's the only difference for us. So that's why it's not worth us entering into a, as a party to this agreement because there's no, none of our village, I may have said something imprecisely before, but what I, what I should say, the way I should put it, is that none of our village obligations will change. It's only to whom we will pay the same amount of money.
So, so we write two checks instead of one?
Exactly. Yep. Okay.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Chris? Okay. Are there any other questions?
Is there a reason they want to be anonymous?
I, I, I don't know. I, they, maybe they're protecting, yeah, I, I, I don't know.
Okay. I'll call the matter to vote here. We've got a motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right. You know what to do. All right. Thank you. Let's move on. Fire commission update. And I'll give you what I have. There has been, last week, I had a chance to go over and meet with the city of Lake Mills. And then I had a meeting over there with the town of Lake Mills and representatives from Asteland, Milford, and a small part of Waterloo, two different days, 21st to the 23rd, I believe. Here, here's what I am hearing. With the, the city of Lake Mills, they have a service, but that service is going to terminate with their EMS on June 1st, I believe. That's the date. And so they are out just looking for information. There is nothing binding at this time. They're, they're trying to figure out what they're going to do. They have their own EMS service and it's in a building and it has three units, but then the fire department has a unit they went ahead and bought and it's in the fire station. But they have decided not to do anything further with their own EMS. This is the city. Now, this, it could be complicated. And the reason I say that is because the city of Lake Mills has approximately 6,500 people in. That is the entire service area of our Cambridge area fire and EMS. All five municipalities are about 6,500. So that would be a very large kind of a, an association. The other part about this, I think that Lake Mills is looking at trying to get through this. And they would want to have probably an agreement that would last maybe for three years. And I have gone ahead and I have said, you know, we have a commission and it's made up of Rockdale, Lake Mills, Christiana, Oakland, and Cambridge. And I want us to continue with that same group. We can add. And I believe we should because that will help us with expenses. But to just go ahead and provide a service, I'm not, I'm not convinced of this. But we are looking, we are talking with them and I think that they will probably do something on their own because they bought in the Cambridge area EMS and they also bought in a private contractor to talk to them. Two nights later, we met, Mark and I were over, Mark Cook, with the town of Christiana, president of the Cambridge area fire and EMS commission. We went to Lake Mills. Now it was the township. And it was packed, you know, cameras, municipalities, just a lot of people. And there were Asteland, Waterloo, Milford, Lake Mills was there. Again, nothing has been decided. And a lot of work has to be done here, if it's going to be done. You'd have to have the location of where you're going to put this, the leadership, the cost, the expenses, how that would be reimbursed, you know, paid in. And then the approval process from the municipalities. And that would take, that would take unanimous consent. Now, we could do something with them if we wanted to according to legal counsel on a short-term basis, but it would be as a contract player.
You guys can't sign contracts. So your legal counsel, it says right in the intergovernmental agreement that the EMS commission cannot sign contracts.
If you are going to be bringing somebody else on as a full commission member, but if you're going to be bringing them on.
That's not what it says.
Okay. I, I'm just relying upon what I was told yesterday by our attorney. So nothing has been decided. Nothing. They are asking for some help. And it's, you know, we, our service, thank you. We are over there. We are already performing in that area. We are doing transports and calls. And we, I don't think we should just refuse to, to talk with them. So they're in a bit of a pickle as to what they want to do.
The township of Lake Mills, right?
The township, all of them.
Not the town.
The town and the city. Because they got to figure out what they're going to do too.
Well, the city should, needs to figure something out.
Yeah, but.
Because we can't support them.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I, I think it's going to be big for the, for the, the city and the town. All the towns collectively, I think there's about 1,500 people, if I'm not mistaken. Mark, something like that. Paul, is that what we had looked at? So it, it wouldn't be as, as, as large of a service area. Personally, and I will talk about this, but I, if any of these, if this did go on and we were to come up with a plan, this would require unanimous consent with these towns to join up with this commission, but they're full members. And it doesn't make any difference what size. They're still full members and they get to vote, just like the five of us do currently. So that's what we have. There are some other, other things, but I wanted to get through that. Mark, am I missing anything here? Mark, am I missing anything here?
So far, I think you got it.
Okay, all right.
For expansion, there's two different sections in the intergovernmental agreement. One of them is if you were going to purchase something, and you have to have a contract that's big enough for this purpose, it does require a change in the intergovernmental agreement that would require unanimous consent.
Okay.
What about the town of Deerfield? What are they going to say with Deerfield?
You know, Deerfield is somebody else that has approached us. We've had a discussion. They're currently served by Grove-
Deer Grove.
Deer Grove. And, again, supposition on my part. I think what's happening is the new Amazon plant that's going on over in Cottage Grove, there's a lot of interest over on the western side of Deerfield. On the eastern side, they're going to move everything over to Cottage Grove in support of that and the way that Cottage Grove is growing. I believe that the western side of Deerfield is looking, the town, to see what they could do, because this could affect their response times.
The village of Deerfield, or the township?
No, town.
Township?
Yeah. So, you know, has there been some discussion? Yeah, but they were going to leave this one alone for a year, and last point of contact, I think it was like last summer, so.
Okay.
All right. So, I will, I'm going to, if there are no questions. Paul, did I get most of this right from your recollection? Was I wrong on anything?
Numbers and stats were off, but I'd be happy to come back when I'm on the agenda-
Okay.
And give a presentation, if invited, discuss the numbers and stats. You're probably off about a thousand on the population for the township, but I'm not expecting you to know those numbers. That varies depending on which townships are in, which townships are out. Remembering and making sure that the board knows that there's a difference between a contract and an intergovernmental agreement, which you made pretty clear. Just to reiterate that the townships are interested in intergovernmental agreement and getting that approval from the different boards, whereas the city of Lake Mills, you made crystal clear, is interested in asking for proposals for a long-term, a long-term contract, three years. And they had two providers that presented, they asked for about five different providers to present, and they only received two. One was from us, and one was from Ryan Brothers. But I certainly would, I would definitely be happy to come back before the board on the agenda and give the presentation and even discuss it in more length if Mr. McNally wants me to.
Okay. All right. Mark?
I just want to add to it that all of the conversations with the municipalities of the townships over there, it's been made perfectly clear that it's cost cause or cost payer, which is a regulatory thing. If the cost is related to them, they pay that cost. It's not going to cost the village more money or the town of Christiana more money. The hope is that if you spread your base out across a bigger footprint, that you can control the costs going forward. If you know that everything's going to get more expensive as time moves on, if you have a big enough base, you can control that number. But they are fully committed to cost cause or cost payer.
To piggyback on that, Mr. Cook and Mr. McNally made sure that any proposal that we made to the city of Lake Mills and the town of Lake Mills included one hundred percent of the expenses being covered by the bid proposal that we gave them. For example, in the city of Lake Mills, a proposal was given to staff their ambulance, one hundred percent covered their operational proposed costs based off of our numbers, covered their personnel proposal costs based off of our current personnel costs and our numbers. So, that ask was made of the commission president and secretary treasurer, Mr. McNally, that all costs, cost cause, cost payer, that we make sure that those costs are passed on, and that there's not a cost passed on to the current five communities. Any proposal that has been made has been had that in mind, and that has been taken into account and made crystal clear at not only the city council, but also at the village and township meetings as well.
Okay. All right, thank you. Again, we don't, you know, we will help out our neighboring communities, we are already in Lake Mills, but I do not want to see this result in an increase to the five communities that are in our commission, and they will be paying for whatever else it starts with to go from there, and we're not subsidizing anything. Okay, that's it for me and the update. I'm going to go on to item two for the fire commission. I think, Paula, you wanted to talk about the possible expansion with Lake Mills?
Yes, because I had heard about it from a constituent, and took a look at agenda item and saw it on there, and two concerns. One, and I understand that the EMS legal counsel may read the intergovernment agreement one way, but I would want to work with our counsel to see how we would read that agreement, to see if that's an agreement about whether or not you can enter any contract without approval. The second thing, I saw absolutely no meetings with, this was discussed, and for the fire and EMS council, where was all of this discussed? I mean, we've been asking for meeting minutes, and none of your meeting minutes had any of this stuff on it. So, where are you guys discussing it? Because it can't be just Mark and Mark, the Mark and Mark show, it has to be the entire fire and EMS commission. So, when have those meetings happened, and where are the meeting minutes from those?
I know that Mark and I have had discussions. Again, nothing finalized, nothing binding has been presented to them. They have a roadmap, but there's a lot of loose parts on this. Has there been discussions? Yes, all right, and we've also-
With the full fire and EMS commission?
No, we've bought in, no, we have not had the full fire and EMS commission.
Okay. So, that's a problem, because you guys can't just work independently with just the two of you.
Okay.
It's the whole, and fellow board members, I don't know if you think I'm off-base there, but, I mean, we could, this board wouldn't be, I mean, me and Chris couldn't go off and start having conversations with somebody about an agreement that we'd want to get into with someone else, so why is that any different for the fire and EMS commission?
We have had, we've got three board members that, of the commission, myself, Mark Cook, as well as Dave Schrader, in addition to Paul Blount, where we've looked at numbers of other services. We have not bought in the final two, which would be Rockdale and Oakland. Now, we can do that at the commission, or we have been able to do it ourselves, and that's what we have done. We felt that that was the best way to go. Now, we're not going to be coming back here, because we're nowhere near having a final discussion with numbers, locations, vehicles, personnel, equipment. I mean, it's a preliminary, and I wish we had more time, I really do, to be able to fully investigate everything. As I said, we probably, if we do anything at all with the town, it will be done on a contract basis. Now, we'll answer the question-
But there's a question?
Let me finish. When we get done with that, we will be working towards bringing them into the commission, but I don't see this happening between now and June first. Now, what's your question?
So, regardless of whether it happens between now and June first or not, my point is, you aren't, you are a governmental entity. You are not following statutes and rules you have to follow regarding open meetings, regarding conversations like this. I'm just concerned.
It sounds like there's a question of, if there was a quorum of the governmental entity, you know, and I don't know if, it sounds like maybe there was, and yeah, if that's true, I'm sure the legal counsel of the government entity would tell, would tell the commission that it does need to be public notice and with minutes and all of those things, if there were a quorum. There can be a walking quorum, you don't trigger walking quorums if you're just exploring policy ideas, but if there's, if there are decisions made with a couple people, I mean, a couple people can't act outside the collective-
It just seems to me that taking proposals to other municipalities, a decision was made.
I would like to know of Paul Blount giving a proposal to Lake Mills and Ryan Brothers, we are a part, Cambridge is a part of the fire commission, right? So, I would like to know what was being briefed to Lake Mills? What was proposed to Lake Mills?
Okay.
Where is that? Is there a video of that? Is it recorded?
Sure, you said my name, so I'll speak to that real quick. So, first of all, this isn't the first time that I've given a proposal to a district as a district representative before a body such as yourself. So, we make lots of proposals, truck proposals, ambulance purchase proposals, equipment proposals, and most of those discussions occur prior to them being presented to the separate village boards and township boards, not just here, but the other places that I've been professionally. That being said, I might be missing something, but Mr. McNally and Mr. Cook have made it crystal clear during the proposals, myself included, that this is a proposal, meaning that we would need commission approval, and that commission approval has a representative that you have on that, which would be Mr. McNally, who you voice your yes or no through and speak like you are tonight.
But you can understand my frustration that we're just finding about this now.
Sure, and I think that, I think that that is a genuine concern, especially when your ambulance in your community is probably going to be going to Lake Mills on a daily basis starting June one, whether we have an agreement with them or not, because they will be without an EMS service. So, it's probably good that I'm here tonight and that we're having this discussion to make you aware of it. Through mutual aid and the requirements that we follow when we receive mutual aid in this district, we've got a real problem, a real crisis. That's why the video cameras were there, and that's why we're, you know, that's why we're in the position that we're in. We have a real problem. Your neighbors do almost nine hundred calls a year, that's way more than we do, and they're going to be calling for our services, so we need to figure something out. It needs to involve you, each one of you at this table need to be aware of it, and you need to have input on it through your representative, Mr. McNally, and then as a board, you need to be aware of it. I need to come before the board, most certainly, and discuss this, let you know my proposal and our proposal that we put together, just like when we're buying an ambulance or we're doing other things, you need to be aware of it, and we need to follow the intergovernmental agreement as we plan to do. So, I've made it crystal clear, and I know that you weren't at these presentations, but to say we have to have support of the communities that are listening to the intergovernmental agreement in order to do, to move into the commission and to the district, there's strong interest, strong interest. There's at least four communities that likely want to join the district, but that's going to be a decision that lies in your hands in the future, and that's a decision that you, you're going to have to make, so.
So, if I wanted to better understand the position of legal counsel and kind of parsing out what was permissible and not, I could, that's Boardman Clark that you use. Okay. And which attorney specifically over there? Do you-
Yeah.
Okay.
He's been, just for council purposes, every time we have a meeting, every time we're going before, you know, he's advising and looking over materials and making sure to his best ability, you know, we're asking for advisements, and we follow the IGA and don't step out of bounds with that, so.
All right. Okay, does that address your concern here, your question? Paula?
So, I can see the video that's on the Lake Mills municipal site?
Yes, sir.
And was there anything mentioned about, was it just EMS services in this proposal?
EMS services only, yep. No discussion about anything else.
All right. Okay, all right.
Last week, both, both city and township, if you're trying to find the video, they were both last week, so.
Okay, I'll go on to item three underneath fire commission update. Paula, again, you had EMS personnel fire training.
Yeah, it was brought to my attention by a constituent that the EMS team is purchasing fire equipment and taking fire training. My question there would be, why is taxpayer dollars being spent for that when we have a separate fire department, and there are no provisions for our EMS staff to work on the fire department?
Okay.
So, I don't know why that's happening or where that's happening, and I just feel like that's as, again, concerned about taxpayer dollars being spent in a way that I don't think is in line with what the fire and EMS separation, which is currently called out in our intergovernmental agreement, calls for.
Okay.
In the fire constitution, right?
Yes.
All right. Let me take the first kick at this, but I may end up bringing Mark in as well as Paul. There are, there are expenses that are being incurred, but eighty percent of the training that is going on with the firefighters and the EMS on this training, eighty percent of that is picked up for by the state of Wisconsin. Am I correct, gentlemen, roughly?
Roughly.
Okay, eighty percent. So, that means twenty percent of it is still here. The, everybody that has been hired, including Paul Blount, who is the current chief of the EMS, has a fire background. We knew this, we wanted this. I think that, and I've talked about this before, I think you're going to have to have EMS that are fire certified, I think you're going to have fire certified that are EMS. You cannot just be going out with one. You've got to have, with the leveraging that's going on, the cost of equipment, you have to have this type of training. Furthermore, you already have, the fire department has CPR. So, if we're going to be criticizing the EMS for going ahead and getting fire training, then I could ask, why is it that the fire department is going ahead and getting CPR?
Because a fire department having basic fire or first aid skills and CPR, I'd go for CPR training. I mean, that's, you're talking apples and oranges, Mark.
Well, you're talking a fire department, which is, and I don't want to define fire departments, because I value what they're doing, but they have this training. And I think that the EMS that already is certified in this area should continue with this training.
But that's not what we hired them to do. Our intergovernmental agreement, EMS is EMS. It is not EMS and fire. It is EMS, because that's not what our intergovernmental agreement says. And can I finish my, you asked me a question, can I finish it? Because it's not in the intergovernmental agreement. And the second thing is that once we have paid staff at fires, we are down a way slippery slope. We have an excellent volunteer fire department. We do not need to have paid staff at fires right now, because our fire department is doing their job. There have been no problems with them being able to answer fires. So, I don't understand what this push is to have paid EMS personnel involved in fires, because we can't afford it.
So, you're going to hold them back in cross-training, because that's what you want?
That's what the intergovernmental agreement says.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Cross-training is cross-training. That's kind of what I'm hearing from EMS and fire, they want to cross-train each other so they can back each other up. I don't see an issue with that. Obviously, you do.
Is there fire department people here?
Chief?
Do you want to cross-train with EMS?
Do we want to cross-train with EMS? EMS has their job on their own.
And you have your job on your own, right?
That's correct, because when we get paid staff to call, EMS has their job to do-
Correct.
-when it comes to patient contact. We have a job to do to fight fires.
Correct.
I see no, I see no issue with the cross-training. I consider that a policy.
I think we have a huge issue with cross-training. We would have paid personnel answering fire calls, when, if it's a fire-related item, having paid staff working along non-paid staff, are those people training with our volunteer fire department? I mean, there's all sorts of things that are problematic here, and- I mean, there's all sorts of things that, that are problematic here, and, and I would question if it is in line with the fire department's charter or constitution or whatever they work on. And it's spelled out in the intergovernmental agreement that they're two separate entities. I just would like to see them maintained as two separate entities.
Which one of these people do you not want protected if they're unafraid?
That, you know that's not what I'm saying, Mark.
But that's what I'm saying.
It is absolutely not what I'm saying, you guys. Stop putting words in my mouth.
But this is what I'm hearing from you.
How am I saying I don't want them protected?
You just said, you want this aisle to be here, you know, you want this aisle to be here.
That's not fair. She's, she's articulating, not a personal policy preference, but what is spelled out in the intergovernmental agreement.
I see nothing wrong with cross-training, nothing whatsoever. I've been in healthcare 40 years. I love to see more people cross-trained into different fields, to be able to help when you can, and you're trying to stop it.
That is not what I'm, that is not at all what I'm saying.
Let me, let me give you this, and then we can maybe bring in Paul or Mark. I think that the time for a vehicle to pull out, if it's a fire call, help me out, Mark, what is it, six minutes, something like that?
I can answer that question on the cheap.
Okay, go ahead.
So from, when we get our page, we've got six to seven, they're calling us in six minutes if we're not rolling. That very seldom happens, but it does happen.
Okay, all right.
So it is six minutes.
Six minutes. Mark, or Paul, what is the, the out the door, you know, your response rate? What is it, two minutes 60 seconds, something, or two minutes 30 seconds?
It's close during the day, much less at night, a little lengthier, because we have to put on clothes and gear and respond to the call.
Right.
They're sleeping, but pretty fast.
Okay. So we have a vehicle, and it's on fire, and there are people in it. I would like to be able to know that if we've got qualified personnel, and they are out the door, and one-third of the time of the fire, the fire is coming, but this vehicle is burning right here and now, that these guys have the necessary personal protection to be able to help that, that victim. I mean, we just talked about it at the beginning of tonight's meeting. Now, does that happen all the time? No, I'm sure, but it, it does happen, because we do support the interstate. Joe?
Can I say something? So with that being said, what you just said, so if you do have that car fire and you do have a person in there, that's, the primary job is for the ambulance, is patient care.
Yeah.
We're rolling out to put the car fire out, the house fire out.
Right.
So are we ever gonna get out there as fast as they are? No, because they're state, they're right there.
Yeah.
But to get, to go full-time fire department, you have to have at least a minimum of four people under paid staff. I'll let you guys figure the math out on that.
Yeah. No, I, I know when we, when we went this route. Todd?
I need to chime in real quick. From what I understand, the Department of Public Works has been, what, before me was, was part of the volunteer fire department, and they were going out on calls, right? Dudley, Lee, and they were going out on calls. Were they being paid while they were out on these calls during the day?
Probably.
From what I understand, they were. Is, is that not the same, is that not the same thing that you're talking about?
Throughout the entire county and throughout the region, DPW workers respond to fire and EMS calls, so, yep.
Oh, just, I'm curious.
That happens. That doesn't mean that has to be our model. I think the board needs facts. So Fire Chief, how many EMTs and paramedics do you have on your fire department?
Right now, I can think of two of these.
Two, two total EMTs and paramedics?
No, two paramedics.
Two paramedics and then how many EMTs?
Zero.
So I count about six or so, but again, the Fire Chief's gonna know his numbers more. We have, almost all of our department is cross-trained. Every single full-time staff member is a firefighter, firefighter one, firefighter two. Most of them volunteer in their communities. I think I've come before the board and shared this information before. It's just good that you're armed with facts as you make decisions. I'm not asking you for a decision tonight, but I just want you to know that all of our staff are cross-trained firefighters. They want to help out if that's what you want, and that's certainly something that will be discussed in the future. But most of them all come from firefighting backgrounds and volunteer department backgrounds, and that's why they're going to, going to firefighter training, and that's why they're going to EMS training. Firefighters also receive CPR training. I would tell you as a professional before you tonight, 30-year experience, and the gentleman behind me, I have just as much if not more, longstanding fire departments, even separate fire departments, receive EMS training. They've received that EMS training from us. They've received, they've received that same CPR training from us. They've received EMS first aid training from us and other entities. So it is not abnormal at all for those.
I agree.
Relationships to mix and mingle and work together. We are not, we are not the same, and we are not as good without the fire department. We are not, we are not as good without them. I'm not gonna speak for them and say that they're not as good without us, but we, we need each other, and so we, we end up doing this all the time, and that includes in our training as well, so.
So I have one more thing, and if they want to be on the fire department, our policy is a volunteer fire department, so they have to be a volunteer if they want to come. I mean, we're not saying no, but that's the policy to become a member of the, if you're a volunteer fire department, you just have to apply and go through our procedures and meet with our board and so.
Okay. All right.
If not, receive one.
And, and I would imagine if, if they are staffed to be covering EMS, they wouldn't be able to voluntarily respond to a fire as a volunteer.
That's correct.
Because they're, they're staffed on EMS. So they would only be able to serve that volunteer firefighter role on their off-hours.
Kind of true. So currently, right now, we're staffing at a level where we can allow firefighters that are on Cambridge Volunteer Fire Department to respond even while they're covering EMS hours. It's currently happening. We have several members that, you know, volunteer and then volunteer for EMS as well. And we, when, when our staffing is to the level that we can allow them to leave to respond to fire calls, we currently do that. It happens recently, just a few weeks ago, where we had a member helping us drive for, you know, drive for the day or be a third EMT for a severe storm, and a fire call came in and we allowed them to leave. We believe in that, because that helps with, just staff the fire trucks and we can help each other out. So we're trying to do that more and more, and the fire department's been really great about allowing, you know, anyone that wants to apply to the EMS department come over and work with us, so we have that relationship. So it's kind, it is somewhat happening now, but that ambulance is always, you know, staffed with a minimum two, which is a state requirement, so.
Okay. Anything else?
No. I think the, the big concern I have is the, the pay differential between the fire personnel that's a volunteer, that gets paid per call, basically. So what's a scenario like where you have a trained firefighter one EMS personnel that goes out on a fire call? Are they not now getting their hourly pay or whatever their, their EMS pay is? Does that change?
I can't speak for the fire department, but I can speak for EMS. They would, they would go off.
They would continue getting their EMS pay.
Off the schedule and, and they respond on the fire call. They could, I mean, fires happen for hours sometimes, so they would have to be there for, for hours. So we haven't, we don't have that relationship yet. Maybe in the future, we would explore that through the intergovernmental agreement and through the, you know, the Cambridge constitution, but I don't know that we have that worked out yet, so.
And I think that's where Paula was going with this.
Right, so when you release that, sorry, when you release that third person, and you said, you don't need them, go do your volunteer work, they were off the clock and not being paid by EMS anymore? And they were just going out there and answering from a fire service?
Situational dependent. If it's 10 minutes, I'm not gonna bump them 10 minutes of pay, 15 minutes of pay.
That's understandable.
A lot of fire calls, they'll get a fire alarm, they'll turn around and come back. If it's a lengthy call, then they're gonna be off the clock.
And that makes sense to me. That makes perfect sense.
Off the clock for EMS, but they would still get their stipend from the fire department, which is, I, you know, I'll let the Fire Chief comment on that, because I don't have that memorized, so.
Yeah, no, that's fine. That's fine.
Okay.
And I don't want, I mean, I feel like, I feel like there are people in this room who have misinterpreted what my intent was or what I've been saying here. I strongly believe in our fire department. I strongly believe in our EMS, but I also strongly believe in abiding by the agreements, right, the agreements that we, we currently have in place. And until those agreements change, my role as a trustee is to make sure that we're abiding by those agreements. And, and that's really what my intent and purpose is here. I appreciate everything everyone does. I know what hard work it is. And, and I just, we all have roles we have to play, and my role as a trustee is to make sure we're abiding by our rules and our laws.
All right. I think your sentiments are shared with everybody here at the, at this table, so.
I'll speak for EMS. We, we appreciate the feedback, and we appreciate the input from each, each community that we serve. You know, we serve five communities, hopefully more in the future, so we can help out our neighbors. But we appreciate the feedback and we value it, whether it would be different from, you know, our goal or not, we, we want the feedback. That's how this is supposed to work. And just know that I can tell you that we have a discussion almost every meeting about following the IGA, and we seek legal counsel on a regular basis. So I can only speak to my experience, but we are regularly and frequently, more frequently than I have working in other districts, asking for counsel, interpretations of the IGA, and making sure that we're following it to the best of our abilities, so.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
So I did have one follow-up thing, Mark. I probably should have asked this during yours, which is your update. When is the Village of Cambridge going to get a response to the letter that we sent to the EMS in October, I believe it was, with the number of items that we had questions on?
I think that had gone, I don't know, Mark, do you remember that letter?
You'll have to talk to the legal counsel about that. Steve has that letter. We didn't see a need to respond, I don't think, if you can ask him.
I'll follow up.
Thank you, Jane.
If we wanted an agenda item on the next board meeting, I can share the results of my conversation with Steve.
That would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Joe, did, Paul kind of gave a summary. Did you have anything that, I'm giving you fair opportunity here, anything that, on the fire department, you want to share?
Just let, we've got a strong, we've got 33 active members, eight honorary active members, so our numbers are strong. We've been, we've helped 30, 28 call right now, so.
Okay.
So the whole idea that the fire department is gonna have to go paid at some point, I think is simply not the fact in the Cambridge constitution at this point in time.
Okay. All righty. I hope you're right. Okay, thank you. We'll close that session. We're gonna move on to correspondence. We don't have anything, right, Lisa?
Nope.
Okay. Questions, referrals to staff, future agenda items?
I'd like to get a public works meeting kind of looks in the next couple weeks, talk about the equipment. Now, I'd also request having Chief Paul Blount at the next board meeting to discuss the, the possible expansion of Lake Mills. We can put together like a pros and cons, what that's gonna look like to the villagers of Cambridge, so we can get a, we can see what that looks like in a public forum, ask some questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Others?
Do you have a date for that?
March 14th. Yes. March 14th.
Okay, thank you.
13.
Then legal counsel.
14. Oh, there's really 14, yep, sorry, 14.
Okay.
Jane's gonna brief us on what.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody else have anything that they want to talk about? Okay, if you do, just get ahold of Lisa and we'll put it on the agenda. Upcoming meetings, March 8th is the Library Board, the 13th Economic Development. We also have the Plan Commission the same evening. March 14th is our next Village Board meeting. 21st, Water and Sewer, and the 28th of March, our final meeting here for the, for the Village trustees in March. And at this time, anybody want to help me with item 13?
I'll make, you want to read it, Chuck?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to convene a closed session for 1985 ones of the Wisconsin statutes to consider and point of motion compensation for points of violation data of both.